And we, I know we have Andy. Good afternoon. Today is July fir- June 1st, sorry. And this is our work session. Members present, we have member Higgins, member Jacobs, member Lessons, and member Wilson. I will, and I see member Holloman joining online. And we will update as we see other, the last member arrive. So our agenda today, we are discussing our student outcome focused governance. And part of this will be a refresher for some of us, and it will be new information for our newer board members. This is a process of governance that we had, that the board adopted about three years ago. And so in preparation for more discussion at our retreat, I've asked former board member, it sounds funny, doesn't it? Alicia Hildy to join me in doing this training. We need your questions. We want to share with you, you pretty much, I think, have an overview of our strategic planning process, kind of what that looked like, big picture. This is, this makes it really real here relative to the work of the board. And so we're hoping that you will not only find it engaging and exciting and all those things, but you will have lots of questions. And again, we will explore deeper when we get to our retreat. So I thank you all for being here. And with that, I would like to turn it over to our guest. I do want to say one other thing for the last, for me, for the last seven, probably six, seven months, I've been engaged really deeper into the student outcome focus governance process. Just making sure that I'm, that I'm really understanding and making it part of my practice. And so part of that is a cohort that I'm a member of. We're not in the same cohort, we're in the same cohort, but we did some of the, we did some work together, which is why I asked her to join me today, join us today. So.
All right, I'm ready to go, Margot. I got a little bit less time than I was hoping for, so we're gonna, we're gonna move. All right, so what we're gonna do is start with our student outcomes focused governance manual. So this is a product that you'll be working with at your retreat next month, I guess in a few weeks. It's something that is guiding the work of the district right now. So as a board, you're always free to do whatever you want to do, but in understanding what's happening now, you're going to be able to make better choices and better understand the work being done. So one of the, the framework we're gonna go over today is the colored blocks. So you'll see six of them. On page two, you'll see vision and goals, the title's at the top of each one of those, values and guardrails, accountability, communication, unity, and then continuous improvement. So we're gonna be walking through each one of those in preparation for your board retreat and your baseline's board self-evaluation. That's something that sounds like you're gonna be doing at your board retreat, and you want to be able to be reflective and be preparing to see how is your board doing. But before we start, I want you to jump over to page thirteen and fourteen and a little bit of fifteen. When we talk about this framework, this isn't something that, you know, some guy named AJ just put together and said, I got some good ideas, let's, you know, we see that in education a lot, somebody's got a good idea and we're gonna run with it. The framework is really rooted in the best available research for school board governance. That doesn't mean all the research is great. That's part of the, the challenge we're working with is trying to get improved research. But all of these links right here are what this framework is built off of. So some of it starts with corporate governance. Some of the books you'll see, they're really tied to corporate governance. Some of the research out there is very, you know, good as an initial step on looking, how does that apply to school board governance? What does that look like?
The framework is really rooted in the best available research for school board governance. That doesn't mean all the research is great. That's part of the, the challenge we're working with is trying to get improved research.
Sure. You ready for me? Is it on? Yep. Well, you guys can hear me, so that's fine, right? Okay, we'll keep going. So some of these, like I've shared, I think Katie has shared with you eight characteristics of effective school boards. If you've already looked through that, this framework lines up with a lot of that. So there's nothing in this framework that was just pulled out of the sky and we said, this is a random thing and hopefully this helps. It's all built off of this collective research saying, how can we pull these pieces together to better equip boards to make intentional choices and improving student outcomes? So we're gonna start, we're gonna go with goals and vision and goals. So each one of these categories, so that's page two. It's the first colored page, page two, you got that? I'm not gonna like make you put a finger on it like a teacher. But I'm looking. All right, so you have four categories in each one of these. One of them is saying, if your board is in this red category, you're not really focused on student outcomes. The work you're doing, it's something other than what children know or are able to do. You move over to the orange, it's saying, okay, you're doing, you started to make some intentional choices to make sure you're focused on student outcomes. Green, starting, you're meeting some, you're doing pretty good frankly. You're meeting a lot of those evidence-based measures that show us what effective school boards do in high-performing districts. And then when you get over to blue, this is kind of the optimal based on the, you know, available research of what an effective school board's doing. So the board self-evaluations that tied to this, you'll see there's a zero in the top of the red, a ten in the orange, twenty-five in the green, and a thirty-five in the blue. When you do your self-evaluation, if you haven't mastered all of the red, then you're at a zero. If you haven't mastered all of the orange, then you'd still be at a zero. You have to master all the orange to give yourself a ten on that score. So that's, you have to complete the whole section to say that you've really moved up. So vision and goals, I mean, your board has already adopted goals. So you have already looked out to your community to say the, what is our community's vision and values for education and anchorage? And you went through that goal adopting process. So if you're looking in the red column, you've already gone through both of those. If you track this across to the right, it generally matches up. So whatever wasn't happening in the red, you're gonna see it progress, but sometimes there's an extra element added in. Dora, can you look through on the red, the third and fourth one? And just share it with us? Go ahead.
Hi Dave.
So you're looking at board has not consistently?
Yeah.
The board has not consistently demonstrated the ability to distinguish between inputs, outputs, and outcomes?
So for that one, you'd be looking at, is that something our board can do or not? Do we all understand? And that might be a really easy one to get to. You've all worked and, you know, been paying attention really carefully and you might feel like, I've got that down. But if you haven't, it's something to be reflective on. Are we really clear on who, what's the difference between buying toilet paper and whether kids have improved their reading outcomes? So that's something for your board to discuss. It's not that it's like a checkbox, but it's saying, where are we at? A reflective practice. And then the next one?
The board has not hosted opportunities to listen to the vision of the community during the previous thirty-six month period.
So that's something for you to check on because you did the goals and guardrails, community listening session, but is that something you wanna, you know, need to revisit? Has it been thirty-six months? It's easy to kind of roll past some of these. So the point of this framework is not to say, check, 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 check necessarily. It's to say, do we agree with this? Do we want to do this? It could be that it's been less than thirty-six, but you want to do another one. So when we go over to orange, I'm just, I'm gonna roll through all of these, so I'm gonna go a little bit faster. You've already adopted a vision, so you're doing okay, and the superintendent was involved in that process. And the board has adopted goals aligned with the vision. The board's only adopted SMART goals. Would you, would you all say your goals are SMART goals? Are you familiar with that? Okay, so this would be a checkpoint to see if there's a board member who's maybe not familiar with what SMART goals are and why you have them. It's that opportunity for discussion to make sure you're, you know, all growing in professional development. You've done the no fewer than one or no more than five goals. And the superintendent has adopted three interim goals to progress monitor each SMART goal. Do you think you, where are you on that one? What would you say?
On the interim? Will we?
All right, well, it's blinking.
Just leave them on. Okay, there you go, it just takes a while. So we shared a draft interim with the prior board. We have it, just any little tweaks now working, and at the retreat, we're presenting the full interim goals. So that's something, say you had adopted all of your goals and you're like, cool, we're on track, we've done all this. Well, how are you gonna get there? This framework helps you look and say, oh, where are we gonna do interim goals? You know, and you can say, it gives you some tools to ask questions of your superintendent and of one another. And as we're going through this, the goal is to pull your questions out on this framework and really introduce you to it so that when AJ comes, you can really have some meaty questions for him. So if you have a question now, that's fine, but we're gonna go through and hopefully just get you familiar with everything. And then the board's publicly, at the end of orange, the board's publicly posted the vision goals and interim goals for public comment prior to adoption. So that's just following a good governance practice. Moving over to green. The board's goals all pertain to desired student outcomes. So that gets back into, do you know what student outcome is? Do you feel confident knowing what that is? In addition to the goal, interim goal ending points, the board has adopted interim goal ending points for each year leading up to the ending dates. So not only do you just have one for this year, but how are you gonna get to your 2026 destination? What, what do you expect from your superintendent? All interim goals pertain to student outputs or student outcomes. So looking on those interim goals, looking at the quality of them, looking at, are they really gonna help us get to where we expect this district to get to? So this is just to help you advocate, well, I'll just keep going.
Are you guys, anybody familiar with student outcomes? Inputs?
Inputs, outputs, and outcomes. Is that, and if you're not familiar, we have a handy dandy of glossary. So if you look on page nine, you'd see input. But if somebody wants to say what it is real quick, I'd be open, just to ground the discussion. Dave, do you want to share what an input, output, and outcome is? Or what you kind of think they are? Definitely, an outcome is, do the kids know? Are they able to do or know what you said you wanted them to do or no? What about input or output?
Resources.
Resources for inputs, yeah, the things you put in. And then what about output?
Results.
Results. Yeah, and if you read it, the results of a particular set of inputs, it's usually notable in the middle of a cycle. So input is kind of easy to remember if you remember, middle of a cycle. Then it's a measure of the implementation of the program or strategy.
So outcomes at the end.
Yeah, absolutely, that is that, right? So the words kind of make sense once you're doing it. But today, your goal is like, if I didn't really quite understand output, put a star by it. And then really, you're gonna be able to deep dive into that a little bit more. In green again, the board included students, parents, staff, and community in the goal and interim goal development process. All board goals last from three to five years, all interim goals, one to three. And the goal interim goals challenge the organization and require change in adult behaviors. So it's, one of AJ's lines is, student outcomes don't improve until adult behaviors change, right? It's the adults who, you know, just like in parenting, if your kid's throwing a tantrum, you look at how, how your choices are impacting that. Right, and then to the mastery level, the board uses a process that includes the whole community. And all of the interim goals are predictive of their respective goals. So you don't just want any interim goal out there, it needs to be something that's going to, you have a reading goal? Is it, your interim goal is something that's going to more likely than not lead to that reading outcome? And then the board relied on a root cause analysis, comprehensive student needs assessment, and our similar research-based tool to inform identification and prioritization of potential goals. So Dave and Andy and Nate, were you here for the root cause analysis? I can't remember. Yeah, so that did happen, but you might be interested in what was that? What did that look like? So those would be useful tools for you to know how you got to the goals you have and whether you even think they still represent the community's vision and values. Those are questions you should always be looking at. So that's your first category, vision and goals. Are there any questions on vision and goals?
There you go. I'm green now. So I'm sorry, could you clarify? Was there a root cause analysis that preceded the creation of the goals and guardrails?
Absolutely, and what you could do is then request that from your superintendent or your board president to say, could I see that so I can understand the baseline for why you chose some of the goals the board chose? Okay, we're at three sixteen on time.
Oh yeah, that would be great.
I don't remember.
I think it was last year.
I think I blocked out some times.
The white paper?
Would that just be the process we went through where a member suggested things and we put them up on the board? And then we, we as a group prioritized which ones we thought were the most important?
That would have been the adopting of the goals ones. The root cause was a pay, a two-page summary, I think, that the superintendent shared. And so it might be good to refresh because even at that time, there was a lot happening. So it'd be good to know and to have more confidence in the why behind. May I?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and member John Lee, you are correct. At the same time that we had that meeting where we decided we had that with us, we had done it in a side of the room over here, just that quick learning. And then we had that paper when that process went on. So that, that's where you saw it. So when, if you did your evaluation on this, you'd just check that one off. But if you haven't had all the blue, then you don't get all those points. All right, so the next one is on page, did I already lose my pages? I never use paper. Page five, is that right?
The next, for the values and guardrails?
Nope, page three, there it is. All right, values and guardrails. So we did vision and goals and then values and guardrails. So your guardrails are the things thou shalt not, the things that you tell your superintendent, you should not do this in achieving those outcomes we talked about. We want our students to read eighty percent by 2026. But you don't get to have schools that don't have a, you know, mental health practitioner in each one of them. Okay, you can't take, pull all the counselors out to get to that, right? That's something that the board has told the superintendent. So these are your thou shalt not, and they should represent the values of your community. What does your community care about? So if you're looking in the red one, the board has not adopted a vision, the board has not adopted goals, the board has not hosted opportunities to listen to the values of community during the previous twenty-four month period. I would say that it hasn't, I don't know if it's been the last twenty-four months, because I can't remember. You know, but that would be something, yeah, to look at. Are we, are we listening to the community? Are we saying, come tell us what your values are to make sure that you're still tracking with what they care about?
I have a question. Would the town halls that have happened, that would be something different than this listening to community values?
Well, that's where you get to decide, right? So this is not telling you how to decide how to listen to your community. But you can say, I think we have said, come and tell us, or man, we really, we haven't, we're, it's pandemic, we're kind of busy.
Can you ask your question?
Oh, I was just, I know, you know, last week we had a town hall. Is that something that we as a board would consider? That counts as an opportunity to listen to the values of the community? Or not?
Absolutely. Every time people come to testify, that's an opportunity. The thing that we want, I think we need to work on is how to do a two-way kind of thing more, you know, a couple of times a year. But that's exactly what we did when we did the strategic planning. It was a two-way conversation.
Okay, and then looking at the orange one, we're still talking about the guardrails and the values of your community. And you adopted them in collaboration with your superintendent, and they're aligned with the vision and goals. Does anybody know the vision of the school district? I bet you don't. We miss, mix up mission.
There's a mission, and then there's the vision.
So this would be a reflective opportunity to say, I wonder what the vision is. If we're going to put it on your website, you're gonna tell, you know, all those principals and administrators, here's the vision. It's useful to know what it is. And then to see if these guardrails you did actually line up with the vision. Or if you think the vision's weird, I mean, you have it out there, so own it, right? Know what it is and see if it's something that you think reflects the values of your community. Each guardrail describes a single operational action or class of action. So it's not like a long list, it's just saying, don't operate schools without a mental health practitioner. And the board has adopted no fewer than one and no more than five guardrails. Why do you think you have these limits in here? Carl, why do you think sometimes it says one to three or one to five?
No. Left it off on purpose. Policies or establishing the shall and shall not issue, so.
That's a hundred percent correct, and I think it's really important that you brought it out. When you meet with AJ, he recommends policy diets that you don't overwhelm your, your district. But in your district, you get to choose what you want. So it is correct that your policies are another layer of instruction to your superintendent on, on what you can or can't do, like the NRS and instructional inequity policy. It's really a guardrail to say, we want you to not let these kinds of things happen.
And you don't want more than five policies in the board rails?
Well, these are the ones you're gonna be measuring and really monitoring. In theory, you should monitor your, all of your policies once a year. Your schedule has it on a three-year cycle that you look to see if you're doing the things that the policies limit. So that's something you get to decide as a board if you're comfortable with. This one has, one's articulated, I think the AST has four guardrails, is that correct? Four? So those are the ones you're gonna have listed, is it four, right? And you're gonna be looking each year along with, so you're gonna be getting an update from your superintendent based on this framework. So in sharing this framework, it's to understand the work that the superintendent is gonna be doing this year, why she's gonna be updating you on those mental health counselors, and maybe not all the other policy things that you, you know, you might just request of her, hey, let's get an update on this. But that was a really great observation because you are correct. Oh, go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, I mean, I think Pat kind of touched on it, and that you want to make sure you're providing clear direction but not overwhelming and, yeah, make sure you're focused and accomplishing things.
I will tell you, I have worked with some boards where they'll have fifty goals. Fifty, and they have a long list of them, and it's great, but what are the odds? What do you think of them, you know, being successful in those goals if you give a list of fifty to your superintendent? It could be that you're gonna be passionate about it, and you're gonna check it, and you're gonna track it, and you're all into it? That, that's every board's choice, but statistically, you'd be less likely to achieve any of those goals if you have so many. So looking at the goals and guardrails, whatever you're doing, there's a, the limits are in there for a reason to help you achieve what you said you wanted to do. Great, the superintendent, we're still in orange, has adopted in collaboration three interim guardrails. How are you gonna get to those thou shalt nots you told her? You can't go from zero to perfect overnight. So are you gonna get seventy percent of your elementary schools with a counselor by next year? You know, those are the things you're gonna be expecting from her to say, show me how you're gonna get to this guardrail we gave you. And then that they're publicly posted for public comment. Looking at the green one, the board's guardrails relate to the board's goals. Whatever your goals are, you want your other work to support it. In addition to having ending points, and the board has adopted interim guardrail ending points for each year leading up, right? So we don't, we want to see what's the superintendent's plan to get from point A to point B over those next, you know, five years. In year one, we're gonna increase by ten percent, twenty percent, whatever she thinks is possible. But you've given our directive through those guardrails, and this is how you can check to see if she's doing it.
Let me see, by the way, guardrails, you're talking about interim goals right now. You using goals as guardrails?
Nope, so this section is the guardrail. So AST has adopted four guardrails, and I don't know if I have them memorized. I'll look at you. Which one is it? Oh, right here. Superintendent will not leave student groups underrepresented in lottery application-based programs. So you were telling her, using this, that she has to do that by 2026 or whenever the interim goal deadline is. And you are gonna be saying, well, what should we expect by year one? What should we expect by year two? That's what she's gonna be bringing to you. So again, this, this is just to share the framework that you're gonna be seeing information coming to you and understand why it's coming to you. Why is she coming and showing me these three-year cycle of how we get to that? It's rooted in this process of, of not just flipping a switch, we're gonna go from zero to a hundred, but we got twenty-five percent increase, we got to fifty percent increase, seventy-five percent increase, a hundred percent.
I think that the goals represent the vision. So those would be our three primary goals. The guardrails represent the values from the community. And they work together. And that, that was a whole different way of thinking for me. It took me a bit to figure it out, but.
So that's a great one to mark down for AJ to talk more about because you're gonna keep wrestling with it because you are a hundred percent right on the policies are guardrails. So they don't perfectly fit together, and you guys will just have to decide what you want to do with that. And it doesn't have to, you know, not, it might not be the most important thing. You'll, you'll decide what things you're gonna focus on. So back in green, the board included students, parents, and staff in the guardrail and interim guardrail development process. So do you know if that happened? Was that part of the community discussions? Did you hear the values of the community when you were going out to all those meetings and for the goal adoption process? So you have to look back and do you know if that happened? And if not, do you think it's something that you want happening? The board adopted one or more theories of action to drive the district's overall strategic direction. So the district does have a theory of action, is that correct, Dr. Bishop? Is there, there is a theory of action?
Not specifically.
I mean, really, our goals and our interim are based off of it, but it wasn't using the traditional theory of action research from Harvard. The first one is, what's a theory of action, right? The second one is, is this something you want? Are you cool with the superintendent? It's kind of like, if we do this, then we should. Or how do you delegate authority within the, you know, the district, things like that? And to be very transparent on, on what that is. So those are questions you might be looking to see, what is that? Do I want to learn more about it? Or maybe I'm not really worried about it? And that's a choice too. You know, the probability of anybody doing all of these is not, you know, not a hundred percent. So you gotta look to see what makes the most sense for your board and your district. All board guardrails last from three to five years, all interim guardrails last from one to three years so that you're having those beginning and end dates and an accountability to your superintendent. And then that these guardrails, interim guardrails and theories of actions actually require adult change because student outcomes will not change unless adult behaviors change. So they should push people a little bit, they should challenge people to really do things in a different way and have a reason for it. And then looking at the mastering values and guardrails, the board used a process that included students in the community in a way that leads them to express ownership of the adopted guardrails, interim guardrails, and theories of actions. Does your community feel invested in this process of improving reading, math, and life, college, and career readiness? Is that, is that something when you go out to the community, they're responsive to, and they're like, yeah, that actually, I, I'm excited about that too? All of the interim guardrails are predictive of their respective guardrails. In the same way, you want, you don't want just random interim guardrails, they need to be rooted in a, some sort of rhyme and reason, and that's your superintendent's job to share with you. And it has to be influenced. So you talked about this, superintendent has to have over eighty percent of authority over roughly eighty percent of whatever the interim guardrail is measuring. So it couldn't be that we want all children to grow up in safe, loving homes, right? Your superintendent doesn't have authority over making that happen. They should be things that she can actually, you know, influence and cause to happen. They should be things that she can actually, you know, influence and cause to happen or achieve. And then in addition to the guardrails, the super, board has adopted one or five guardrails on its own behavior and evaluates itself against at least one of them each month. I haven't seen a board get to this step yet, but it's kind of an exciting concept. When you look at the research to see what do effective school boards do in high performing districts. You're going to see the, the highest performing ones, they have constraints on themselves, on their own behavior. We will never be late to a meeting, maybe that's your board's priority. We're all going to always be on time and prepared. Those could be things that you do, you have some of that in your board court of conduct, but it's something to think about. Do we, do we want to be explicit in it? Do we want to be public and accountable? So choices. The next one is accountability and monitoring. Oh, were there any questions on values and guardrails? As you reflect on this before your time at your board retreat, you might have more questions that come up, so we'll introduce it and then it all stirs around in there.
I guess I have a question.
I was just going to make an observation. Our guardrails are really policies, they're not in policy. They were really things the board came up with to guide the implementation of the goals. So then. It was a good question because it would seem like they would be policies, but they're not.
You use the term guardrail and you talk about it being overly restrictive on the authority the board, the superintendent has. That implies that it controls, it's not just an interim type of goal, I'm sorry. Was it on? I didn't mean for it to be on, okay. That was an accident. But, but the, it implies that there is guardrails by depth, by description or limitations on the authority of the superintendent to do things in different directions. You have to stand on, in your lane, right? And not to go outside that. So I didn't view that as just simply say, these are interim goals. I view that as they shall and they shall not. Questioning policies is a good example of guardrails. You, you will do follow these policies and if you don't, and it's subject to review by the board, that, that would be a guardrail. That's not a day-by-day guardrail, that's a, that's an ongoing situation. It says these are policy directions, what you can and cannot do. So if, if the guardrails are nothing more than interim policies, then call them that. They're not really guiding anything. How she gets to that interim policy would be up to her discretion, the way you're describing it. And I don't see that as limitations, but if you're doing limitations, then, then the, the example you gave was confusing now.
May I?
Sure, and I would just, you're, you're both correct.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say. The, you mentioned, the, when, in the discussion, how we got there was that the goals, the board wants these things done and you just said, well, the superintendent has to get those done according to how, and it's up to her to get them done. Well, that's how the conversation came about with guardrails, that they are, there are some things that thou shall not do. Like we want to make sure when you achieve these goals, thou shalt not do these things. And it was in an essence to capture some guidance from the board about how to operate and getting there. Because the, the board, it goes back to the training that we had last time and what is oversight? And what is overstepping? Goal, the guardrails were designed for the same thing, like we should have a say in how things move forward, but we can't say this is how you're going to do it. So instead it's thou shalt do, these are the highest things that thou shall not do to get to those goals.
Thank you. And some boards do choose to adopt these in the policy. So they do choose to incorporate these into their written policies. So lots of different ways to, you know, make choices for your board.
I wanted to jump in actually. So I think one question, which I guess I'm still noodling on. I understand that we have a set of values and vision, goals and guardrails that have been established for 2020, you know, through 2026. But I also think it's important to know that, you know, there has been, I mean, the way that our board is elected, re-elected every year, there can be, there can be change. And how, you know, in, in 2024 or something, you know, in the future. To what extent are the goals and guardrails dynamic versus static? Are we committing to, to them being established as they were written?
I think that's where the.
18 months ago?
I think that's where the goal monitoring comes in.
Okay.
I think she's asking a different question. She's asking if the current board changed what was done in the past.
Absolutely. So every board can change any goal.
Exactly, but it should be based on how, on monitoring. You just don't, I don't think we want to just change for the sake of changing. I would think that we would be changing based on how we, you know, what, what, what we're seeing. So whether, whether that's six months, a year or longer, we should be able to do that as a board.
And back to the student outcomes.
Right.
Well, let me, let me say this, I mean, the National School Board Association, as I told you before, differs on your, the best practices issue. And they have maintained, we are the voice of the public, we provide directions and we hold accountability. And in doing so, that includes all aspects of what you think need to be done. And that's why I encouraged the NSBA to be part of the discussion in the future with one of these retreats. And that we want to help prior school board members, because you changed it in the last three years, but before that it was different. And, and there were some significant administrative type issues that come up that we have handled in the past. And the board has been involved, whether it's changing policies, changing curriculum, changing the way that the capital improvement projects was done. So that we could develop and expand career technology. We did a number of things that wasn't necessarily supported by that administration at that time, but the board and their voice directed changes, even in the budget process, what we wanted. That would be more connected to the kids. So it's not just saying, we want to have a goal or something better. We got involved in challenging the issues and then providing directions. So that's a lot more involved in the process than what you're describing. And I don't disagree with the, the overall premise here. You know, we need to be focused on education for kids. But we do get impacted by, by administrative costs that we can put more into schools. We do get impacted by how we administer the school district in so many ways. And the NSBA's position is, that's a decision by the board as to how far scope you go to. That's not an administration and that's not a council, great city schools, anybody. That current board is responsible for that. And I, and we all signed the, the ethics bid or the conduct for the NSBA that reflects upon, it's going to be our opinion, it's going to do this, it's going to do that. It's a little reflective, different. But I just, I see this is focused, I agree with the goals. With the, with setting goals and you kind of have a limited amount, otherwise you get totally distracted. But it's towards administrative direction, our best year ever for mine, nine years, 2010, we hit 10. And we got a lot of things done, including career technology, budget, differentiated instruction, a lot of good stuff. And I don't want, and we control as the board, we have to decide what would be, if we get involved, is it going to help the kids? And if it is, we should do it. And if it doesn't, we should back off. And that's my perspective.
I mean, that's really what this is about, is being reflective and saying, is this, is this doing what we wanted to do or not? This is, you know, just rooted in evidence on what the high performing districts are doing. It doesn't say 100% of your time has to be this. So you as a board, you get to decide how you spend your time. This is just the student outcomes portion of that, the, the goal monitoring portion of that. So it's not all of your work, it's just the part that you're focusing on your student outcomes and goal monitoring. And that you're doing that in a way that's rooted in evidence-based research and what we're seeing in high performing districts. That doesn't mean you have to choose it because of course, as Mr. Higgins mentioned, you are the ones who, you know, are oversee this district. And it is your, your responsibility to do that. So thank you. Okay, so we're still on accountability and monitoring. So this is the third section. The board has not adopted, we're in the red, the board has not adopted goals, guardrails, interim goals, interim guardrails. And you're working on some of that. The board does not schedule each goal to be monitored at least four times per year. Do you tell your superintendent when you expect those reports to be shared with her? Do you work together to do that? That's something you would want to talk to your board president about. And the board does not schedule each guardrail to be monitored at least once per year. Did you get an update on those things you told her not to mess with? You know, how you do that can be your choice, but this is just helping you to look and see, did we do it? And are we okay if we didn't? And the board has not adopted a monitoring calendar. So what do you expect as a board from your superintendent throughout the year on what updates should she be prepared for? And then her team, right? It all trickles down to when you tell her what you expect, now her administrators know what to expect, now her principals, now her teachers know what to expect. And so you're providing that is anchoring and guiding the district's work. The board does not track its use of time and board authorized public meetings. So this is something maybe Katie has shared a little bit with you, some of your time use tracking. And in some of that research that I pointed to at the beginning, one of them is like asking boards perspectives on how well they focus on student achievement. And shockingly, everybody thinks they do a great job focusing on student achievement. So the time use is a way to say, are we? And it, it doesn't mean this number's right or this number's wrong or good or bad. It's, are we okay with what we're doing? And being transparent in what the work you're doing. And then at the end of red, the district has not achieved any of its annual ending points or ending dates for any of its interim goals during the period, previous 12 months. This is kind of a, a hard line thing to say. It says that if your superintendent didn't hit your interim goal, right? We care, you as a board care that if you, she said she was going to improve 10% on reading and third grade and she didn't, that's a real problem. So this is a kind of a bolder approach of accountability than maybe boards have historically done. And maybe not this board, but other boards. Looking at the oranges, the board invests no less than 10% of its total meeting time monitoring its goals and interim goals. Do you, you get a goal monitoring report? Do you spend some time really digging into it and asking your superintendent for more information? The superintendent led the interim goals, guardrails and monitoring calendar development process, right? You didn't just tell her, here's when we want all those reports. It's useful to know, when does that data come out? When should we expect some of these updates? And to be a collaborative process. The board's adopted a goal monitoring calendar. The board's monitoring calendar spans the length of the board's goal. That's, that's up to you on how you want to do that. And your board president will work with your superintendent, but certainly she needs your input on what do you expect to see? The board has received monitoring reports in accordance with its monitoring calendar. Do you have something you can hold to say, did she give you an update? Did she give you a report to say where we're at? And the superintendent is evaluated only on performance goals regarding the goals, guardrails and interim goals, guardrails. So that's something to reflect on, how do you do your superintendent evaluation? Do you really mean for her to, you know, in the corporate world, you might say deliverables, right? You've given her these goals to improve student outcomes. Are you serious about it? Are you tying it to her superintendent evaluation? Is that something you want to do? And if you do, let her know ahead of time. So that, you know, she knows you're serious about it once it comes, you know, to next year for the evaluation. You wouldn't want to just surprise your employee. You want to be transparent at the start. Looking at green, the board, now we're talking about 25% of its time on goals and guardrail monitoring. So that's where I talked about some of these are progressives, 0%, 10%, 25%. You might be okay with 25% of your meeting being on goals and guardrails and you don't really care about getting over to blue 50%. That's your board's choice, but at least you're reflecting on it. You can make an argument that the majority of your time should be spent on student outcomes and what students know are able to do. That's something your board is to decide, how much of our time do we want to focus on this? Still in green, no more than two goals are monitored per month. If you try to do everything at once, you're probably not going to get too deep into what you're doing. So that's part of breaking it up in goal monitoring calendar. Maybe in the past at a, a board retreat, you try to do everything at once. And then it, you know, it's hard to really get into the meat of it if you're looking at every single piece of it all at once. Breaking it apart allows you to dig deeper. Every goal is monitored at least four times per year. That's part of your calendar and the guardrails are monitored at least once. The board has been provided of copies of the superintendent's plans for implementing the work. And the implementation instruments for that. Do you understand how she's going to get this work done? Is that something you want to know more about? Mr. Higgins' point is that you have a right to know how this stuff is happening, right? So did you get that work? Did you, and is that something you need to ask her for or not your priority right now? The most recent annual evaluation took place no more than 12 months ago. Are you regularly evaluating your employee and providing that feedback? And then in the blue, the board invests no more than, or no less than 50% of its time on monitoring student goals and interim goals. That was a little wild for me to even imagine what that would look like. But what I'll invite you to do is, if you're interested, I can send you a link to other boards who have said, we want to try this. We really want to spend 50% of our meeting doing this. And they went from zero to 50%. And you, and you can watch some other boards who are trying to do that, large districts. So it's kind of cool and then you're better informed and can make, it might be a different choice, but at least you'll have a better source of information to make those choices. And then only board work was discussed or acted on during board authorized public meetings. So hopefully that's happening, always want that in the public. The board modifies its goals, guardrails, interim goals, guardrails and monitoring calendar no more than once during the span of the goals. This gets to Kelly's question on when should we change it? What's the best practice? If you change your goals every year, you change the target, that's confusing for leadership and implementation. There might be a cause, certainly a goal of pandemic is a significant change, right? So it could be an appropriate thing. But if you're doing it the next year and the year after, then is it really the community's vision and values? Or is it getting out to be something else? So things to reflect on. The district has achieved the annual ending point of at least half of its interim goals during the previous 12 months. Are you doing the work you said you wanted done? Is it getting done? So, go ahead.
So our number one goal is for our kids to read better. And I did ask the question, I don't know if it's the last meeting or meeting four, is what precisely are we doing towards that goal? And I think it would be great to get some sort of quarterly report that explains what exactly the administration is doing towards that goal. Is, is that something we can, we can do? Because I wasn't really clear, I mean, it was kind of, we're doing the best we can to convince our teachers to utilize the curriculum we adopted.
Through the pandemic, we really operated on, through Calvert Learning and, and, and not face-to-face. So just this last quarter, so we haven't fully implemented, these were adopted in December. Got through the pandemic, got through, so you will have that. We, we actually haven't even started. We did share, you know, prior goals and tried to share SMART goals with, you know, this is what we're, we're trying to do. But with these new goals, we haven't delivered those to you yet. But that's an excellent thing to bring up, member Donnelly. And you said quarterly, that's the four times a year. So you can be on your board president and say, where's that monitoring calendar? Here's that framework. But you can say, you know, let me know and, and that's some tools for you in advocating for how you do the work you do.
I guess my point is, I'd be really interested in specifics on how we're getting there because I'm very vague on that now. I realize we want to try to, we, before the pandemic, we were specifically working on FSC from our instructors utilizing the curriculum the board had adopted. But we didn't get very far with that. We, we had the survey, but we didn't get very far with the implementation of, of that because of the pandemic. And pushback. Yeah.
And really not aligned with the class model. So, yeah, you are absolutely correct. And when you do adopt your goal monitoring calendar, that's in a public process. So all of the district employees are now aware of the board's expectations. We expect a quarterly report on this reading goal. That, that translates into change the adult behaviors, right? Oh, they're going to put my school up on the screen and compare it to another school and seeing how we're doing. But it doesn't mean anybody in the district's not working their tail off every day. But it's what are you prioritizing and what sort of outcomes are you telling them that you want to see? So when you adopt that monitoring calendar, that supports that goal as well.
And I'm hoping to have that to the board sometime in August for the next year.
Thank you.
And then the last one, if the board approves an annual budget, it only does so after determining that the goals are the first priority for resource allocation. So of course, that's your choice on that. But if you've told the superintendent to double reading scores over the next five years, then you should see that reflected in the budget. And those are great questions to ask during the budget planning process. How is, how is it fitting in, especially if there's one you're, you know, more concerned about as well? Any questions on accountability and monitoring? Okay, next is communication and collaboration. Oh, go ahead.
I, I'll wait.
Next one is communication and collaboration, that's page five. So looking in the red column, we have the board has not adopted goals and interim guardrails. So the nice part is, some of the boards I've worked with, they haven't done this yet. But you, you get a bunch of checks because you really do have a strong foundation to start from. The board did not receive the final version of materials to be voted on at least three calendar days before the meeting in which they were going to be considered. Are you getting the materials you need? Are you getting the materials you need before you're voting on them? So this is kind of doing the bare minimum of three days. And there were more than six board authorized public meetings in a single month during the previous 12 month period. So are you meeting, any meeting that lasts, if you had any meeting that lasted more than eight hours during the previous 12 month period? I don't think you have, so good for you. The winner currently is, I think Miami Dade, is that right? They had a 26 hour board meeting during the pandemic. So kudos to all of you for having reasonable ending times. The board does not use a consent agenda, so you do use a consent agenda. And that's a kind of a efficiency component. The board has not hosted opportunities to listen to the vision of the values during the previous 24 month period. So again, are you going out to the community to listen? Looking in the orange, all consent eligible items were placed on the consent agenda, and all but a few were voted on using a consent agenda. So this is where you can pull things off the consent agenda if you wanted to do it separately or have extra questions. This is saying, most of them stayed on the consent agenda. The board tracks its use of time in meetings for goal setting, monitoring, guardrail setting, guardrail monitoring, leadership evaluation, voting, community engagement, and other. So Katie is doing that work for you because she's kind of a saint, right? I see a lot of board secretaries around the country, you know, the best one. And then looking over at green, and there are no more than four board authorized public meetings per month, and none last more than three hours. So this is encouraging you to tighten up your work effectively. And when you meet, all of these guys meet too. When they're here meeting, they're not doing, I'm sure some of them are over there working. You know, they're, they're not using their time optimally, okay? So looking at how often are you meeting? And it might be that you disagree and think it should be different. This is just looking at what highly effective boards do in high performing districts. The board schedules no more than five topics for discussion during any one board authorized public meeting. How many topics are on your meeting? Are you really going to devote that much time and attention to it? Are you going to be adequately prepared to discuss those in detail? So things to look at in building your agenda. Certainly, the board president and vice president draft that, but you can always provide feedback, say, I think you guys are off track. Let's, let's focus this in on fewer things, but that's up to you. The board limits its adoption of board policies regarding the district matters to matters that are required by law, as appropriate exercise of the board's oversight. Existing policies that do not meet one of these criteria have been removed. So this is a policy diet. Is there a lot of policies that you're looking at? Or do you have it down to like 12 pages and you can each monitor them annually? Those are choices you get to make. And the board made no edits to the board's regularly scheduled meeting agenda during the meeting and during the three business days before the meeting unless a state of emergency was declared. So this is saying, editing your agenda is not a best practice when we're looking at research of highly effective boards. If there's an emergency, sure, but otherwise, that's not what they do. And if you do have a need for it, that's just something to reflect on. Was it really that important, or should we be following a different practice? And really, what caused us to get to that point? Was there a miscommunication? Did the board, did that person not know how to go to the board president and look for areas to identify the why? Not like finger pointing and blame, but how can I help this process not happen again? How can we prevent it? So things to think about. Looking at blue, there are no more than two board authorized public meetings per month, and none last more than two hours. This seems like a long shot for most boards. I have seen it for some that are very, it's just different boards and different communities. And what's possible here is going to be different.
It seems antithetical to being able to listen to the community.
And so this doesn't include public testimony time.
Okay.
And this is the board's work. Yeah. And certainly you can meet two-way conversation. It might not be a meeting of the board, but you all disperse and go out. Okay? And the board schedules no more than three topics of discussion. So this is saying, you're really tightening up your meeting. What works great in one community might not work great in your community. So those are just choices to make. It doesn't, it's not a value judgment. You're not a good board or, you know, bad people if you don't do this. You're just saying, no, we're cool. We don't need to do that one, and here's why. Owning your choices.
That hasn't been past practice at all. Let me make that clear. Eliminating, so you can only do three meeting, three topics. I don't care where the best practices came from. I know that's inconsistent with past practice boards by a long shot. And I know also that the NSBA has made statements in regards to this. So there's a, a clear conflict here between what they're proposing, NSBA on these issues, and can't be more than two hours, can't be more than this, can't be more than that. That might be good for some, but when we've got topics out there to deal with that are important to kids, I don't care if it's six, three, six, or 12 items, we've had more, a lot more than that. And we've acted on it because we needed to have board involvement and approval.
And again, Pat, it's, Member Higgins, it's really up to the board to make.
That's right. That's my point.
Right. So we're not saying one is bad and one is good. We're just saying, this is the path that we're on. You get to have a discussion at our retreat or whenever we decide to do that on, on, to answer, to, to deal with some of the things that you're bringing up now. But if we could stay focused on the.
Yeah, no, but those are good questions to ask.
And I will capture all these. I'm trying to capture all the questions so we can have more insight.
Absolutely. The board has adopted, you enough policies that the full board as a whole is able to review every policy at least once during the length of time equal to a board member's term of office. So that is all of your board policies, and your current policy says every four years. Maybe you'll move it to every three years to be the term of length of, so by the time Kelly finishes her first term, she has reviewed every policy and said, are we doing this? Because if you have it in policy, you should be doing it, right? The board received the final versions of material to be voted on at least seven calendar days before the board authorized meeting in which it's going to be considered. Are you getting materials ahead of time? Is the goal monitoring report available seven days before it's presented? In fairness to your superintendent, it helps if she has a calendar to follow, right? But if you're really going to dig, dig deep into that material, having it seven days before allows you to get your really great questions, first with the superintendent, but then just to really be prepared to discuss that, what your, you know, progress in reading is, what your progress is math. Okay? And then the board uses a process that included students, parents, staff, and community in a way that causes them to express ownership of the adopted goals, guardrails, interim goals, guardrails, and theories of actions. You've seen that one before. So what you're doing reflective of your community's vision and values. It's, you know, arguably why we have school boards, that we want to, the community wants to have a voice in what happens in their schools. So you bring your community's voice and values, but you might want to go out and check to see, is it still lighting up, right? Because stuff changes.
What do you mean by theories of action?
So theories of action, we talked about a little bit before. Go ahead. You can, so there is like a, you know, depending on capital, the people that designed it, or basically a theory of action is saying that if we do this, then this result will happen. It really goes back to what Member Donnelly said. What are the things we're doing that's going to cause the change in learning behaviors, right? So a theory of action is if we input this and do this training, da, 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 then we should see these outcomes. So it's your plan, your theory of action of how to reach those goals, which is what Mr. Donnelly's asking for. And there are different approaches. So when you adopt it, it's communicating across your district to say, this is the path. Some of it's a top-heavy, some of it's a local decision-making empowered, some of it's a blended. But knowing that not only helps your board in understanding how this stuff gets implemented, it helps your administrators and principals know, oh, we're going to be consistent in how we do this, and there's a rhyme and reason to it. And so if you wanted, I could send you a link to a couple of boards that have it. Okay? Any questions on communication and collaboration? All right? That was page five.
I just think that one of that community engagement piece is, is an important piece that we've got to figure out through our, continue to work on.
Absolutely. Okay, page five. No, page six.
Well, some of, there's a blank sheet. Some of them have a blank sheet, which is page two, so that puts everything up one.
Okay. Unity and trust is what we're on.
Yes.
All right. So this is the board will lead with one voice in its pursuit of the vision and goals. So maybe you've heard this before, there's no individual board member authority. You can't act on your own. It's what the board decided, the will of the board. When you go out to the community, you reflect what the board voted on, things like that. So looking in the red category, the board has not adopted goals or interim guardrails. Chuck, you've got him. And the board has not adopted policies that establish board operating procedures. You have board operating procedures, so good job, you're doing great on that. Some boards have none of these things. Any board member voted on an item on which they had a conflict of interest? So if that happened, did somebody vote on an item where they had a conflict of interest during the last three months? Something you want to be aware of. Board members serve on committees formed by the superintendent without approval of the superintendent and a majority of the board. So if you just decide to join a committee, and you're like, I want to go be over there, that would be something to discuss. I get that's happening, you'd be in the red category. Looking at orange, attendance at all regular board meetings was over 80% during the previous three months. You guys do a great job of that. The board has adopted a policy requiring that information provided by the superintendent to one board member is provided to all board members. So I think your superintendent does that in your weekly board connect. If Carl emails her a question, she pushes it back out to all of you so you get the information. The board reviews all policies governing board operating procedures at least once during every length of time equal to board member's term of office. So using Kelly as an example again, over these next three years, she's going to look at the board operating procedures and say, any changes? Or maybe you're cool with it. The board has adopted an ethics and conflicts of interest statement, and all board members have signed the statement during their current term of office. I believe you've all done. So these are some really strengths of your board. All board members agree that if the board has committees, their role is only to advise the board, not to advise the staff. So that's a tricky one, right? Sometimes a question sounds like a directive, and are you being reflective in how your communication is, not only your intent, but what really happens from it? We see that in marriage, right? I meant it in a nicer way, but did it come out in a different way? All right. Looking in the green category, the board has included language in its ethics and conflicts of interest statement that says, board members do not give operational advice or instructions to staff members. So you already have it. You say, don't, you, your employee is the superintendent, and even individual board members don't tell her what to do. The board is her boss. The board has included language in its ethics and conflict statement requiring the board members are responsible for the outcomes of all students, not just students in their region of the district. So you all serve it at large, so you really are, all means all. But that could be something you change that's come up in discussion before and something to reflect on. Do you just care about the kids in your neighborhood, or you care about all the kids in the district?
I'm just, go ahead.
I saw your wheels turn there. That's great. Okay. The board has included language in its ethics and conflict of interest, requiring board members fully recuse themselves from matters involving individuals or organizations who made campaign contributions to them or who appointed them. So you don't have to do that, right?
You know, we, so we've got all the unions. Sorry about that. Can you hear me? You've got all the different people who have gotten contributions from the unions, everybody here, I think at the table at different points. We've gotten contributions from individuals and interests that have contributed, and that has never been viewed as a conflict of interest, to my knowledge, out there at all. Now, we've got, if you, obviously, you've got a personal financial gain, that becomes a conflict of interest. But when you're simply being supported by individuals or organizations, just call that a conflict. I find this.
And you don't, and you don't have to as a board, yeah. And the board did previously talk about that before, and the conclusion was that they were comfortable with it. So that's okay. This isn't, remember, this isn't like you're a good board or a bad board. You know, you're not ethical or non-ethical. This is a, something rooted on looking at what happens in some high and performing districts. And if it's not that piece that you're interested in, that's okay.
So how many members were allowed to vote on the union contract, for example?
Everybody.
Okay, but by this standard.
Well, we didn't say we're following that rule, you know, so that's okay. You don't, because you are the people who make the choices. This is just to empower your choices.
Thank you. Member Higgins, I can't imagine any representative democracy functioning with this rule. I mean, the logical extension of this rule is any parent that made a donation to a candidate, if they supported a particular issue, you'd have to recuse yourself. I mean, that's, it's, it's, I don't know anybody that utilizes this rule. I don't, I'm amazed that there's any district out there that utilizes this rule, because it's certainly not applicable to the United States Congress, or the state legislatures of any state, or the local governments of any local government.
You can represent anybody but your supporters.
Yeah, exactly. It's the exact opposite of what.
This just shows that there's a lot of different communities out there. In some communities, this isn't a problem for them.
This represents best practices to have this in here. That's what, that's what I'm hearing, is that based upon studies and information from the Council of Great City Schools, this, if this is an example of the study, represents the best practices that, that individuals who are collected by the public cannot vote on issues involving people that supported them. That's what best practices shows, and there's studies that support this. I'd like to see this study.
And so that's a great thing to ask for. So I love that you brought that up, because this should say, why? Why is this in here? And so we'll bring that up with AJ as well. But when we talk about this, you can use best practice in a different way. When we look at high performing districts, effective boards in high performing districts, there could be a lot of reasons why a district is high performing. It might be that this issue just never comes up in those districts. So that's another research inviting question, too. You could say, I, I think we should know more about that. Or it could be something, I'm not really concerned about it. I feel comfortable with it in our community. And you don't have to spend any more time on it. So that's okay, too.
And we have, we have a pretty strong conflict of interest statement in our board.
Okay, the last one in green, the board unanimously agreed during the most recent quarterly evaluation that board members have honored the three aforementioned equitable boundaries during the previous 12 month period. So you, one, it's saying you did your self-evaluation, and two, you're feeling good about how you guys are honoring your board court of conduct. So you can alter that, and if you don't like that piece of it, just say, did we all follow our board court of conduct? You know, and that's something you can just own in a different way, that, that fits this board's values, right? Okay? And then in blue, the board unanimously agreed during the most recent quarterly self-evaluation that all board members adhere to all policies governing, governing board operating procedures during the previous three month period. You guys following your operating procedures on emails and replying to stuff, and I don't know, 9250, maybe that's what it is? All board members and the superintendent agreed during the most recently quarterly self-evaluation that none of the board members had given operational advice or instructions to staff members. Just reflecting, and it might be that you did, and you say, okay, well, I'll do that again, or I learned a little bit, and I saw how that came across, and oops. You know, sometimes things happen, and we reflect and move on.
I think it's reasonable that we would not get involved in undermining the superintendent by telling anybody underneath the superintendent what they should do. But we're obviously going to have communications with them, and they're going to be sharing concerns, and we'll be giving responses, because we have communications with everybody in the public, and that's confident. But if we, to go out and actually tell anybody and the superintendent what they should do would be inappropriate in any organization.
So that's a strength. That's great, because this reflects lots of boards around the country, and some of them have some very strong weaknesses in this area. So that's something you can say, oh, actually, we're doing this pretty good. So you can feel good about that. The board conducted, oh, all board members have memorized the board's goals and interim goals. How are you feeling on, do you know your goals? Do you know your, well, you don't have interim goals adopted yet, but what is one of your goals? Don't be cheating. You can't be cheating.
Improve reading to 80% by 2026.
By twenty twenty-six.
Beginning in?
Tomorrow.
Right, so that's something maybe.
Tomorrow.
So that's something, and then when you go out to the community, it anchors your work, when you really know what your goals are, and have them, have to rattle them off. Oh, this is the board's goal, and here's what we're doing. And the board conducted a quarterly self-evaluation during the previous two-month period, and unanimously voted to adopt the results. So you did an evaluation, and you're all like, yeah, I think we're pretty, that's pretty reflective. We all agree. That's, you know, it's saying that you're in unity on, on the progress of the board, not a judgment on yourselves, not a judgment on individual board members, but you agree that where you are on that evaluation. Are there any questions on unity and trust? Okay.
I think that's, this area is a strength for us.
Really great stuff in there. Some boards have no operating procedures of code of conduct. And if we do, and it shows. So, good for you. All right, continuous improvement, the last section here. The board will invest time and resources toward improving its focus on the vision and goals. What book was I just reading? I think the Fifth Discipline. Have you read that one? Yeah, it's talking about continuous improvement, right? If we're not looking at how we're doing, if we're not trying to improve, sometimes you kind of waste away. So the board, so looking at the red column, the board has not adopted goals or interim guardrails. So good, you're doing great on that. Has not conducted a self-evaluation during the previous twelve-month period. You're looking to get to quarterly, but the very least, you did do it in the last year. The board has conducted a self-evaluation during the previous twelve-month period, but you didn't vote to adopt the results. What happens when you vote to adopt the results? What happens in that process? Who finds out about those results? The public. So that's a real big statement to say, here's where our board's at, we're, and, and to say publicly, here's where we think, how we're doing. And there's a high level of transparency there. The board has not participated in the governance team training or retreat where all members were present during the previous twelve-month period. So I think you guys are going to have it in your next board retreat, provided you're all able to attend. In orange, the board tracks its use of time and reports monthly the percentage of board authorized meeting time invested in monitoring the board's goals and guardrails. So Katie is compiling that for you. I don't know if you're reporting it to anyone, or how you're all receiving that information. The board tracks the average annual cost of staff time invested in governance during its annual self-evaluation. This includes the time of any staff members invested in preparing, attending, and debriefing after meetings. This includes all board authorized public meetings, as well as all closed sessions and all hearings. This gets to the time is money. These guys sitting here, you're paying them to sit here. You know, so how much of that time are you using, and is it something you're okay with? It might be that you think that is a great use of the public's funds, and that, and there's value in it, but at least you're intentional in your decision. The board has provided time during regularly scheduled board authorized meetings to recognize the accomplishments of its students and staff regarding progress towards goals and interim goals. Not just football teams, cool to celebrate the sports people, nothing wrong with that. That's a great source of pride. But did you celebrate the kid who doubled their reading score over the last quarter? That's pretty cool, right? And that communicates that you're serious about your goals and guardrails, or your goals. And then the last one in orange, the most recent board self-evaluation took place no more than twelve months ago, using that instrument or a research, using this instrument or a research-aligned instrument. So this is even telling you, you don't have to use this one. You can use something else, right? But this is a tool to use. And then green, the most recent board annual self-evaluation took place no more than forty-five days before the most recent superintendent evaluation. Before you evaluate your employee, you can look at yourself first to see, was I operating with integrity? Were we doing our job well before we go in to criticize or evaluate an employee's performance? The board has hosted, and the board members have led or co-led at least one training session on student outcomes-focused governance during the previous twelve months. So I think you saw Starr doing that during the spring, where she let the community train, you know, train people in the community on what, what is student outcomes-focused governance? What, why are we talking about what students know or able to do in tracking reading and math and life, college, and career readiness? Where, how are we doing that? The board has continuously updated the status and targets of all goals, guardrails, interim guardrails, and publicly displays them in the room in which the board most frequently rules regularly scheduled board meetings. So you have your most recent goals up there, but it doesn't say where you're at. It doesn't say what progress you've made in a very public way. So that's something to consider, whether that's something you want to do or not. And the board conducted the most recent quarterly self-evaluation and voted to adopt the results. So that's adopting your own evaluation in a public setting. And the last section for today, the board included students as the presenters in at least one of the student outcomes-focused governance training sessions during the previous twelve months. So now your students are aware of the why behind what you're expecting of them. That would be pretty cool to have some kids come on and do the life, college, and career readiness, and to explain that to the community on, this is what our board's doing in this area, and, and have kids start to buy into the work you're doing. They are excellent advocates.
I love that idea.
And then prior to being selected, all newly selected board members received training on student outcomes-focused governance from fellow board members on their board or from a certified student outcomes-focused governance coach. Not certified yet, but almost. And the board conducted the most recent quarterly self-evaluation and unanimously voted to adopt their results. The difference between just adopting them, and then you're all in agreement, that's a great sign of unity. Are there any questions on continuous improvement?
I know it's a lot to take in.
Which is why we're doing the intro today, because it's a lot harder to have your questions when AJ gets here, and he goes a mile a minute. So the next section you'll see is your vocabulary words. So if there's a question you're not sure about, you can look through there. The next section after that is goals and guardrails. You'll see that your goals and guardrails are lined up with this, because the board used this to create the goals and guardrails. That's one of the benefits of this training today. Whether you choose to continue with it or not, you understand why things are the way they are. It has some theory of action examples. We can show this to Mr. Higgins when he comes back in, but it shows some of the different models different districts use. And then you get into some great reading. Right, and then if you look, there's a quarterly self-evaluation. So I believe this is what you'll be doing on your board retreat, going through and saying, how did we do in these different areas? And you'll say whether you mastered them all and have kind of a baseline. And then you have your time use. We're not going to go over your time use today. We're just doing an overview introduction. But Katie has your April one. Now, this board only did six percent of their time on student outcome focus, but I think the new board will do much better. So good for you guys. But if you look, it says, looking at vision and goals, did you spend time on goal-setting, goal monitoring? Goal monitoring would go in this section. So if you are getting a reading update, how much time? Looks like you spent forty-two minutes on it. Values and guardrails, did you get an update on guardrails that month, that whole month? Did you talk once about your guardrails that you said don't do? Or you just stress that maybe the superintendent didn't do those that month? Hopefully she didn't, right? You don't know, though. Monitoring and accountability. This puts in time for superintendent evaluation and voting. Communication and collaboration, did you meet with your community? And this is where Margo was talking about two-way communication. Are you having dialogue with your community? This is a great opportunity to really know whether the work you're doing is accurately reflecting the vision and values of your community. And then student family engagement, where you're listening specifically to students and family members. And the last one is continuous improvement, evaluation. And so you'll see that fifteen minutes was in a governance meeting, where you just did a quick one through, through the student outcomes framework to see where we at, what's the next thing we're going to be working on, just to check in on it. Board time use evaluation, that was going over the previous month's use of time and seeing. So you have to decide how you want to incorporate that into your work. When do you want to look at how you're using your time? And community training, if you had a community training scheduled. And then the other is all the other stuff. Other doesn't mean bad. Other doesn't mean it's not valuable. Others just not student outcomes-focused work. That can be budget things, it can be things required by law, it can be fun things that are just great, you know, that are fun parts in your district. So, you know, I just watched a board meeting where it was a ton of time spent on the girls' basketball team, and everybody got a minute to talk, and it was in one state, and it was so exciting, and you're like, this is a board meeting focused on student outcomes? And, but they really did, they spent fifty percent of their time on student outcomes, but they didn't use all their time. They still celebrated the things that mattered to them and to their community. So that was pretty cool to see. So in April, your board spent forty-two minutes, six percent of its time, on student outcomes. Again, that's not like a value judgment of whether you're a morally upright board. It's just a number. And you get to say, are we okay with that? Or do we think we should spend more time talking about what students know or able to do? How they're doing toward their reading, how they're doing toward their math, how they're doing toward their life, college, and career readiness. So those are things that you, Katie is tracking them. You need to decide how you want that information.
And we haven't had a chance to kind of send these out and review them too much, and I just wanted you guys to know that the, that other, all that time includes all of the committee meetings and the public testimony, and so it's any public meeting. Just so all the minutes are in there, just so you guys know.
Yeah. Great. Wait, and then this next one is the continuous improvement. So you take all of that information and plug it into here so that you can know for yourself, where are we? It's really easy to do this report, look at it, and then like, I got a lot of papers, I'm not going to think about it again. But when you plug it into here, you have, you know, more of an annual progress monitoring to say, did we improve at all? Did we do the things we said we cared about doing? Not that this framework says you should do, but that you are choosing to do, that you are saying, here's what we want to do to improve this school district and learning for children. Right, and then the last one is the superintendent annual evaluation. This is just an example. But it's one that is rooted in your goals. So did she do the things that we told her to do? And this is something that you established before the start of the year. If you're going to have an employee, you want them to know, they need to know what your expectations are. I think you see that in your business, you know, professional as well. So that's just a sample there for you to work from. And that is the end for me today. You have this in your packet as well. I'm not planning to go over it. AJ probably will. This is up on the dais. That one district I told you that's just jumped straight to fifty percent goal monitoring, but they did, they broke apart every goal. So say they say, Kelly and Dora, they're on reading. And so when a reading report came up, they kind of ran that section of it. These two guys are on math. These two are on life, college, and career readiness. And that person would say, okay, guys, we're on the who questions. Who's got who questions? And they really were very intentional on digging into the reports, and then they'd be like, all right, thank you for all those questions. Now let's get on to some what questions. In a very, you know, kind of, I don't know, plain, ordinary sort of deliberate way. That doesn't mean it's the right way to do it, but it is a possible way to do it. But this is just helping you get into the reports. It's so easy to be like, okay, well, I see some numbers up there. It doesn't look too good. Seems like we're really a long way off. What do all those numbers mean? You might have your own questions. That's great. This is just to help brainstorm and help you dig deeper into them. That's all I got.
Well, thank you. Any questions? For Alicia?
Or is there anything I can get for you, information before your, your June retreat? It's already June, before your retreat? Or any other research, or, Mr. Higgins, I wanted to, there are some examples of, what are those called?
Theory of actions.
In the framework, there's three examples, eight actions. So that would be good for you to see.
We can decide if we want to have one.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. I'm so excited for your good work.
It's not really a question. It's more of a comment, and I, I really like the idea of having a calendar and making it publicly available, and having that calendar and the results be something that people can, can use as their sort of home base for what is the district doing? And I guess we have the data dashboard, but that takes a commitment to toggle around, and it should seem like it would be simple, but inaccessible.
But as we, the interim goals are finalized and approved, and then we have the, and the guardrails, then we'll come, we have it, you know, in draft form now, we'll come with, you know, when the assessments are taken, when they come back, all those pieces of information. So in the final, when you see it at the retreat, and then we, and I think August was the board's goal for having those adopted, and, and then the calendar is right with them at the same time. So it is part of this. What we turned in was just, you know, this assessment in this month, because we placed them with when the results would come back.
That's a good point, Kelly. I agree. And one of the things, we did some of the monitoring in, in the governance committee. And that's, that tends to work, I thought that worked well, in terms of looking at how we're using our time, just to be aware. It does, you know, who knows what's going to come up prior to any, any, I mean, COVID has taught us to be real flexible. And so, but at, at least in terms of a plan. I mean, this is what we plan to do, but this might not be what we end up doing. So, but I do think having those discussions often, not just at a board meeting, but at our committee meetings, infusing it into our committee meetings, I think. Just like that, the community engagement piece. If we can infuse that into some of our work set, work sessions or commute, however, I don't know what that's going to look like, but we get to decide what that's going to look like. But I do thank you for your time.
No, I'm, I'm very excited. You guys are set up really. Now I get to jump out. Bye, guys.
Thank you. Okay, so continuing on our agenda. We are now at request for information. And I don't know if you, we're going to go over what we have.
Sorry? I have not received any new requests, so everything has been already either responded to in board connect, or we have one left in the long range.
Okay.
Which we had pushed out, I think, until the fall.
So this might be, we have time now, if you would like to give us requests for information. We can, we will accept it now, and we have, we have some time where we can prioritize if now there is what you want, and if at least one other board member shares that request. All right, I'll start Pat first, and then Mrs. Dunn. Oh, okay.
When the board voted four to three not to have a policy regarding the national anthem in our schools, one of the arguments against it was that it was being taught by our music teachers, and was part of the existing curriculum for our music classes. A survey indicated there were at least four music instructors that weren't teaching it at all at that time. And I'd like a follow-up on that and find out if, because we were, I felt it was committed to us that the director of whoever was overseeing the music operations would make sure that the curriculum was being instructed with fidelity. So I would really be interested to find out if at least those ones that previously identified as not teaching the national anthem are now teaching it, and what the status is in our music classes.
Could I find out, just because this school year was very, very different, and music wasn't delivered on schedule. Would you like that after the first quarter?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So in keeping with our policy, is there one other board member that shares Mr. Dunley's request for information? Just need one, right? Mister, Member Higgins. All right, thanks, Mr. Dunley.
Yeah, we, we had academic scores on reading for one year, and what I would like to see is, is a, is like a five-year period of showing what those academic scores have been changing like in regards to not only reading, but academic scores otherwise. We've done that in the past. I know I've seen those, and, you know, in fact, the first month you came in, you gave us three years worth of stuff we didn't, we told, didn't exist, so I congratulate you on that. But that's what I'd like to see, because I see it as an evaluation of what direction we're headed and how we're getting there in line with them.
So help me understand what you're requesting.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, we can certainly do that, and prior to moving to monitoring, we would do that at the retreat. In fact, those data were at the retreat, what Member Dunley talked about, that white paper about looking into, you know, where are we? So it was all written up into that, the summer that we met to, you know, move forward, and then that's how the goals happened. And then since then, the monitoring has focused on the specific goals, and the goal that the board had was third grade reading. And so the interim, the, the time before, just to give you a background, the time before we did the reading of third grade, we did the fast bridge, which was an interim update to the goal. So we, we, we actually, back to the calendar, it really focuses on those little pieces that go, but we do have those data. We can capture them. Those were the pieces of information that were based on these goals, to come up with these goals, but we have them. Yeah, we can provide them in that white paper, and it was all prior to the pandemic, and then once the pandemic, the, the actual testing was kind of screwy, and so we had to hold off with their, their pieces of it missing, simply because last year we didn't even do PECs, so.
On that same subject, the superintendent was good enough to provide me, Pat, with the math, going back in time, the math. It'd be good if we had specifics, maybe, I mean, are you, when you say academics, you know, you mean the whole spectrum, or are you targeting?
I mean, to the degree that they're tracking it, I'd like to see what has been moving down, up, sideways over time. We always keep that graduation rates for the last five years. That was, I mean, August, last year and a half, it's kind of screwy. And I understand that, but we kept track of graduation rates, dropout rates, kept great, of different grade scores. You've done that for the different groups. So I'd like to see something that reveals a little bit of the whole spectrum of how we're doing academically, not just one school, but all of them, to the degree that it can be put together reasonably. I'm not looking at trying to break it out by the classroom and everything, and I'm not doing anything. I don't think it's on.
We'll put them all in one.
But yeah, but putting them all in different years is different ballgame than.
It's on there.
Three, three years, five years? What, what's the span? Did you?
Five years.
For reading and math? For reading and math?
For reading and math.
Okay. Member Dunley, you're, you're green with?
Oh, yeah, but I mean, Pat also mentioned graduation rates and.
And dropout.
Yeah.
Dropout and graduation, yep. All right, we have two requests. All right, we have two requests. Both have two members. Member Wilson.
So I, I'm not sure that this is necessarily a request for information. But what we discussed earlier regarding our goals and guardrails, talking about career and life readiness. And moving forward, of course, I know this past year was the exception to, well, to every. How do we gauge how, how we can move forward and monitor that progress? I mean, how do we break that down? Career and life readiness is, is huge. It's, it's not necessarily always nearly as concrete as reading and math scores. So maybe a better idea of, so I can plan my questions and information for our retreat.
That's a great question. That's coming at the retreat with the interim guardrails. How do we know where we've gone? And that's with that, we'll take a baseline of where we are and moving forward. So that goal was the one that we actually presented a pretty thorough, how would you check and what does it mean to the board? When, when was that? It's all coming together because of this pandemic. So we, we do have life ready, college ready, career ready, just the beginning of it. We're shoring it up with larger groups, stakeholder groups, but that's to bring to the board for the retreat. So great.
Good question. You're on it.
Yeah, I feel like this is a little bit like writing a Christmas list. But I'm curious about what's being done. I think preschool is incredibly important part of our students' lives, especially if we're talking about third grade reading. I would be interested in understanding the efficacy of the programs the ASD has. I know that, you know, in recent, you know, there was a grant, there are new blended preschools that are a couple of years old, there are preschool options in ASD. I think it would be really useful to be able to advocate at a higher level, say for more preschool options, to understand what the efficacy of ASD's preschool programs is suggesting or showing.
So data and their kindergarten readiness, what would you like?
Kindergarten readiness in, in meeting, you know, third grade, you know, if we're looking at our third grade reading capabilities, you know, there are students who are coming in to ASD in, from all sorts of preschool options or none or ASDs. I would be interested in understanding what ASD's options in particular are doing to prepare our students.
Okay, and that, that sounds great and we'll do it. And I, I just want the board to realize that over the last five years, the assessments have really changed. So we've changed our state assessment. We did not have universal use of MAP. The first year we adopted it while I came here to, to make sure that we have longitudinal data. It was AMP, now it's PEAKS. We had a pandemic, they didn't test. AMES web moved to FAST bridge. So a lot of the pieces of data that you're requesting will show holes and can't necessarily totally align because they're a different assessment. So AMES or FAST. So we have those data and can demonstrate. But I don't think for the third grade efficacy, these are the kids that we had in kindergarten for third grade. That is absolutely how, is really strong evidence towards preschool. Anchorage School District doesn't have that yet because we didn't have those set assessments over time. And in the middle of the normal changeover of getting a new bid to an assessment, a pandemic happened where kids just weren't assessed for a while. So then we started this eye ready. So just want to say we're, we have data to demonstrate, but I just want to caution you about what you can infer from it. And it would depend on whether, for FAST bridge, we just discovered, you know, we, we, we did really well. It really depends on did our assessment team go out and do it or did we do it ourselves? You know, those just have two different individual looks to students. So we have those. What you're asking for is quite a lot. What we do have is on the dashboard and what we could do is pull off and try to put it in a report more. That is easily understood rather than clicking and moving and taking all that time. So, but, but just don't, I don't want to overpromise. I'll underpromise and overdeliver, simply because not due to ASD, but due to their, the, the state AMP test and PEAKS, for instance, you know, is, is not aligned. So over time.
So time-wise, do we have a member lessons? Carl will, is interested in that as well. So if you can find the list.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that? Is there any standardized way to make comparisons regarding students that had preschool versus those that didn't? Because it seems like our focus on preschool is on the more demographically challenged locations in the city. And so if you compare those results to schools that don't have the preschool option, you're, but they're going to be in better demographic conditions. So it's going to be difficult to get an accurate comparison. And I think it's really a good thing to figure out.
To, to your point, there's also preschools outside of ASD. So we have ASD preschools, Head Start preschools, so there's lots of different kinds. The kindergarten report card does ask parents to self-report on, did you have preschool, did you not? And about 50% of our students do and 50% don't. But, but, I mean, you're just describing like the headwinds that kids, you know, we talk about, you know, some kids have tailwinds, some kids have headwinds. And so, but what we can show are the data that we do have. And again, probably when we present it, it'll, you'll just have another question that isn't answered in those data. Because it's hard to interpolate if you don't have that longevity. But we will soon, if we can stick. I think the same reason that you just talked about goals and wanting to change them and wanting, is the same. Really, that really is the essence of jumping around and why we don't have longitudinal. If we stuck with, this is what we believe in, this is what we want for kids, and we had the opportunity to straightline it, we would have some of those data. But then again, things surprised us, like the state changing test, like not having a test, changing a test. And then in fact, the state last year had a bid and closed out a bid, but then ended it to change the estate assessment again. One of the good things was that it was, they were looking at using the measures of academic progress, which then we would have had, to your point, longevity, like that we could do it. But they went ahead and put that on hold, do the expense of switching over another assessment, and we're sticking with the peak. So I, I, I totally understand, you know, these concerns. But we'll present the data you asked for with some, you know, thoughts and then just about what we, what we can tell from the data and what we can't. But that's good. That, that's exactly where it should be grounded in, supporting through data and, and outcomes.
So time-wise, I, I mean, I had a question though, Mr. Dunley, what is a demographically challenged area? Is that based on?
Well, most of our Title I schools.
The Title I.
But we focused our preschool expenditures into Title I schools.
Okay, then I agree with that then. I didn't know that that was what you were referring to. So in terms, the next step then is to prioritize these. It seems to me that.
Now, yes, one more follow-up question before you do that. One of the issues I know in the past has been differentiated instruction that is all the kids growing academically one year, every year. And are we tracking that? I know that one of the concerns in reading is that everybody's on the same page and same book. So if you're fifth grade reading, you're third grade, teachers are focused on giving third grade reading material. And somehow that impacting stuff, is that accurate? And if so, how are we tracking that?
Sure, well, MAP assessment, MAP growth tracks your actual growth that you should have. It's a dynamic assessment. So we moved into that, you know, into the district and adopted that assessment. So we can look at those things and it's called an on-track report. So not only do you look for annual growth, what's expected, for students that are behind, you need catch-up growth. For students who already are at a certain level, if I'm in third grade and I test at the fifth grade level, I should have a year-to-year growth if I'm in school from third to fourth grade. I still should move fifth grade to sixth grade, to your point. So we do assess that and MAP growth gives you that information. When it says on track or growth data, those are, so we have just the outcome data, the on track. Are you on track to pass that PEAKS? Or what's your growth data? And you need catch-up growth. Or our guarantee is that every student should learn a year for year, no matter whether advanced or on grade level. And those that are behind need to grow more than a year. And that's why we have multi-tiered system of support to really direct it. And I'll share you, I'll share with you during the monitoring today, those three different assessments. I shared them in the, the reading. It was just nuanced in there. But now that you're asking the question, I can really say that this is for this. On track means this. Growth data means this.
Yeah, is it accurate that I was told that they're all reading the same material now? They're not given differentiated, you know, like the G3000 used to do that. Are we using anything that allows?
They are placed in, every school has a what I need now. And so, and what I need next, we call it the win time. So it is directed directly towards student needs. So some students might be doing more engagement, deeper learning. Others might be getting re-taught and re-teaching. So the, the, again, the target is to, to grow.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's prioritize. I think Dora's question will be answered at the retreat. And that had to do with college, life college and career readiness. Member Dunley, we agreed to wait till August for yours? Is that okay? Is that sounds reasonable?
Or even later, after the first quarter.
After the first quarter, okay. Okay, Katie, you captured. And then the achievement data, are we, are we going to, for, for Member Higgins, were we going to do, what is a good? So, I mean, we normally do immediate, short-term, long-term.
Yeah, I mean, it'll take time to put it together. What we'll do is provide you the data that we, the white paper that has those timeline, longevity of data in the white paper that we did right before for these goals. And then we can, after the retreat, because we're the same people that are doing these things, the same people running summer school and just getting the school year started. So we'll put that on and, and can just add to it when our assessment people come back. They don't all work in the summer.
So Board Connect?
Correct.
Okay.
And here at a board meeting, yeah.
Okay.
But the, the one that we already have, we'll just put it in the Board Connect this week.
And then go from there. And then we had Kelly's question on the pre-K.
Yep, we can get those. Just the different, we'll also share the different types of preschools.
I would say, you know, what is, in a sense, you know, what is the work, what is the work of preschool? What does that look like?
And, and I don't know if we want to. I think, I think you, you guys have already kind of figured out that we're going to be having, we may not have two-hour work sessions, but we will be having work sessions for the near future. And just so we can do this, because we don't have time otherwise. But maybe we could put that in a works, you think we could do it in a work session?
Okay. In, in the fall when people come back. Other, a lot of people have off in the summer.
So it's fall, good for you, work session. I will make sure that happens. Okay. Anything else for the bit of the order? Dr. Bishop, what's on your mind?
I just, I will get on these.
You guys have already had a chance to talk non-Dr. Go on. Member Dunley.
Thank you, Madam President. When we, when the previous board set our goals for collective bargaining, one of the matters that had a lot of support, at least three members of the seven, was seeking additional instructional time during the, during the school day. As we all know, we, by statute, we, we have the shortest minimum school days as far as hours and the shortest school year as far as days of any state in the union. And I've always thought that although it may not be the end-all and be-all factor, it's certainly a factor in the success of our, our students. Because we had some estimates that over a K through 12 career with Anchorage School District, they're getting as much as a year and a half less direct instruction than in some other school districts around the country. So that was why some of us felt it was really important to try to seek an additional 15 minutes or half an hour of instruction time during the school day. Our negotiators chose not to ask for that. And I and some of the former board members were disappointed in that. And I remain disappointed in that. And I was wondering, I just want to throw out there that I would, I, I'm willing to raise this issue again with our negotiators and say that it's really serious to us. I mean, this has a direct relationship in our ability to meet our, our goals here, which is reading and mathematics are primary goals. Because we could devote more time to that instruction for those specific targeted goals if we had a longer instructional period during the day. And so I want to bring that up to see if other board members are, have an interest in pursuing that or not. Or were we just abandoning that concept at this point in time?
What I would, that is a executive committee discussion?
No, 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 it's not, because.
When we discussed it, Miss Member Dunley, we were in executive session. And since we are in the middle of negotiations, I just don't think that it's appropriate for us to talk about what our wish list is for the negotiating team. I'm not saying we can't discuss what you're saying. I'm just saying that, you know, this is a public meeting. And when we have our discussions on negotiation, they are in executive session. So I would, I would, I would like to ask you to bring that up in an executive session.
I don't think that's accurate, Madam President. The reason I don't think that's accurate is because the proposal made by our team to the AEA was public. So since that's public, what's not in it is public also. And I think that's an appropriate discussion about whether the board wants to ask our negotiators to add something to that public initial negotiating position.
Madam President, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So I, I'm open to having a conversation. I'm new to the board, so I don't, I'm going to defer to the chair's judgment on it. But I think what's next for me, based on Member Dunley's comments, is I have questions probably for the ASD team as to if that's correct, what the logic was behind it. But I'm assuming that that would be an executive session conversation.
That, that is an executive session. Session comment.
I agree with.
I mean, discussion. Member Higgins.
Just going to support the idea of having an executive session soon over defining what we provide in a way of directions and what we don't. And I think a meeting, follow-up meeting as soon as possible, and that would be beneficial.
We, we will have, we do not have an executive session today. But we can plan an executive session in the future, I think, to be appropriate. And to follow our guard, our ground rules, let's just move forward in a executive session when it comes to our contracts. Any other comments?
And related to that, Madam President, we were told there was going to be research into the issue regarding, and I hadn't seen anything back yet on that.
They, let's say that for executive session, that we will, but that that needs to be done in executive session for that, for a lot of reasons. And I'll talk after that. Not disagreeing, the understanding of timing is the issue.
Okay.
So any other comments before we adjourn?
I just want to talk about what the special sessions coming, what sessions are going to be included in the class. One of the things I discussed with others is we have some former school board members from over the last 20 years. In regards to the way they work compared to the last three years is different. And representatives from National School Board Association could participate as well to provide some alternatives to the best practices that said I couldn't vote on a union contract because if I got money. I mean, these are closely high performing. To talk about what has worked well in the Anchorage School District from their perspective to get improved results and, and how they function. It's different than it does today. I think hearing not just from me or hearing, I think having a number of people from the last 20 years, different people come in to be able to have that meeting, we can ask questions, we can go back and forth. And so you can hear other than what the change was from the last three years. I have tremendous concerns, Council of Great Lakes School does some great things. I would like to discuss timing or where we might vote on deciding about an audit committee, for example, because there's a lot of benefits to that.
On a what? Audit committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's an issue. I'm not sure the timing on that, how you can go about that process to make it up. Is that going to, something the board can decide, we want to have an audit committee at this point?
We already have that. Okay, so tell me more about what you, if you, if it's having to do with money, then.
It has to do with operating. It has to do with operations.
Operations.
Absolutely. So we would have an audit committee for curriculum. We could have an audit committee for how employee concerns are handled because there's a lot of issues there that I'd love to discuss too. But the board would decide what they consider to be the high priority. The Council of Greater City Schools has a relationship that we end up identifying certain things. They have other large school districts with experts in these areas and that provide these these services on its audit approach that have been, it's very inexpensive. We pay expenses. They, it's really super. And they have come in and done some fantastic things. And I've mentioned purchasing in the past, but that's just one. We've had audit of math of curriculum. But we haven't had a comprehensive audit of curriculum over 20 years. And that's a pretty good example. We now, we have some school districts in the paper out there that that articles talk about during the pandemic with some of their automated systems have actually got some pretty fantastic results. It's kind of interesting. But they've incorporated that and using that now within the school as well. But they've got, you know, some kids excelled in it. So I just want to get, you know, I I believe when I remember a number of years ago, superintendent superintendent made a comment and said, it's not a matter of coming up with the with the what we need to do, it's a matter of looking and look at best practices. It's out there, it's a matter of incorporating it. We're getting that type of advice and consultant fees for such a low price and coming in here and doing that type of review. We all got elected here arguing that we need to get academic scores up. We need to do what's necessary. We don't know what's necessary, but we know we need to do something. And we and we know that other school districts are achieving stuff that we aren't achieving. And I would like to get that level of expertise come in. There are issues and employee concerns that aren't that are that are troublesome to me. An external review can come in and give us a good structure on how to handle that, looking at what we do that might be different than what's being done today. There were a lot of other issues that, you know, you talk about the the preschool, you name it. There's a lot of different subjects out there. Some of these prior school boards were doing audits of of the different departments at least once every three years. We're not going to go overboard like that. But they came in and and saved a lot of money and got a lot of public confidence that way in regards to the way that we're operating. And I think an audit committee is absolutely critical. And I think you're going to hear from all the other school board members on different ones. They're going to talk about how important the audit committee was. It was critical. We can't go in and look at.
We do have, we have, we have, we have ways to audit ourselves. We do.
Audit ourselves?
Not audit ourselves, but we have a process by which we can request various audits. Now, if you are, so maybe what you, what would be helpful for me is if you put in writing all of the stuff that you want to see. My my personally, I'm not against hearing from anybody, but we have work on the table. We have work that we began. I'm not interested in going back to 2010. And you and I've had that conversation. I'm not interested in going back to 2013. I'm interested in taking, moving the work forward. And we cannot jerk ourselves back and forth if we keep, if the only way we want to look is backwards. So whoever has requests, so whatever the audit is you want, let's figure out how to get it. Whatever, I mean, we have work on the table now. So if we're not, and we're not obligated to do the work specifically the way the Council of Greater City Schools is doing it. But this is the path that we're on. And yes, this board can change any of that at any time. But at the cost of what? Our kids. We're not going to, we're not going to make progress if we're if we're if we're if we're not focused on. Somebody had to make a decision before you and before me. And I I think somehow we've got to figure as a board, maybe decide. And I'm hoping after the retreat, we'll have a clearer, you know, we'll have a clearer way to move forward because we're asking people to do a lot of work. And if we're going to be pulling the rug from under their feet, that is just unforgivable for our kids.
You know, the outcomes of what is a serious issue. And that, and before you congratulate us, anything else, I'm not, that's where, at least I feel like I ran and other people ran over the issue of trying to do more from the board being involved in outcomes because the it isn't something that is is acceptable for for the kids. And I'm only asking now for the opportunity to have at one of these early sessions to have some school board members in the past. You've got a lot of different ones out there that that.
Who's interested in hearing from old older former school board members that served with or prior to Mr. Higgins?
I'm always interested.
Well, I'm I'm interested too, but I'm that can't be our only work. And and I guess my my question would be, you know, I I don't. I I don't know. The the National School Board Association, if you want to have conversations with them, then to me, we, you know, that that to me, I would, that I would prefer that conversation. But I have to say, I don't, I don't know. I mean, things have changed in this district over the years. And so we can't expect to do things the way we've always done them. I I I just don't know the value of having, bringing back some people who served 20 years ago. I I don't.
And I'm talking about people that follow the NSBA guidelines that you that you, you're voice of the public. You're the, you provide directions and you hold accountability and how they held accountability. So if we look at what the NSBA says is best practices, which is not the same as this. If you look at what NSBA says, it's different. Well, you listen to them. I do think they should be brought in. We can get them by Zoom probably, and they, that would be beneficial. But I also think the reason why they did what they did and what they accomplished as result is important because they got different results than what right now the academic results are showing.
Okay, any other comments? It is. What I would like to do is, again, Mr. Higgins, put in writing what you would, what you are proposing. So it's very clear to me.
Okay.
And then if anyone else has any comments about or for information or the road forward or whatever, I I do want, I do ask that we, that you give that information to me in writing just so, because I'm I'm the one that's working with Andy and the administration to plan our work sessions. He didn't raise his hand. I don't see his hand. All right, so I think we have used our two hours well today. I thank you guys for your time if we can. That ends our work session. I don't think we need to have a motion to. Okay, motion to adjourn. And then you get a motion to adjourn? Second. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.